Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the July 18, 2025 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez and I am the Chairman of the ZBA. With me today are Commissioners Swathy Staley and Adrian Soto to my right, and Vaishali Rao and Helen Schiller to my left. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I hereby designate alternate Vaishali Rao to sit as a Commissioner at today's meeting. Welcome, Commissioner Rao. Next, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Staley.
Here.
Commissioner Soto.
Here.
Commissioner Rao.
Here.
Commissioner Schiller.
Here.
I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of June's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now we will take any continuances or withdrawals.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairperson, Richard Toth. I'll direct you to page seven on the agenda. The fourth item down, 281-25-S for 3473 North Clark Street.
Okay.
The zoning board team dazzled us with their efficiency and speed in getting us on the agenda. And then the DPD reviewers made several inquiries and comments, which are all entirely reasonable, but we need some additional time to address those, in part due to the lack of capacity for other projects on the applicant's part. I would ask, I guess, for a continuance until October to be safe.
Okay. Okay, you said 281?
Correct.
Okay. So calendar number 28125-S will be continued to October 17th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Isabella Corrie and I am the Director of Zoning for the 43rd Ward. I'm here on behalf of Alderman Knutson regarding the two applications for 2323 North Halsted at the top of page two. The Alderman will be requesting a continuance due to an objection from the neighbor directly to the south to allow more time for the applicant to engage with that neighbor and find a compromise.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Pikarski for the applicant Jonathan Leopold. I would strenuously object to a continuance on this matter. The various setbacks are unusual in this case because the lot is tiny, actually, about under 1,500 square feet. And the alley adjacent is an angle alley, which causes all the grief that the reason where we are here. So I would indicate that there's, there are really no facts in contest, so I would recommend going ahead.
I'm going to grant the continuance over your objection. Calendar's 25325-Z and 25425-Z will be continued to September 19th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Excuse me, my name is Jason Lick. I'm Director of Policy and Zoning for Alderwoman Ruth Cruz of the 30th Ward.
Morning.
Good morning. We're asking for a two-month continuance on the items 270, 271, and 272, which is for 3601 North Cicero. We'd just like to have time to have a community meeting regarding this proposal, these proposals. And two months gives us enough time to do that comfortably.
Okay. Is anyone from the applicant here?
Yes.
Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we understand the Alderman would like a continuance. We'd be happy, happy to attend the community meeting, and we're available at any time, at any time for that community meeting. As a result, I would respectfully ask for a one-month continuance to have that meeting.
One month is not possible this time, but we will continue. Calendar numbers 27025-S, 27125-Z, and 27225-Z to September 19th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? Seen none? Oh, one second. Okay, we will call the first case. Victor? All right, good morning, everyone. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you, Counselor Fatikas. Here's how I think we'll proceed with this one. I want to start by saying thank you very much for the submission that you made. It's fantastic. It's very informative and very well done, and it gave me a lot of information that I was looking to see, so I appreciate that. I want to commend the zoning administrator's office as well for their submission. I'm pleased with the arguments that have been made in writing, and I've reviewed all of them, and we've reviewed all of them. So what I would like to do is I don't want a rehash of everything. You know, you can give us some highlights. I'm not going to put you on a timer, but...
Yeah, I completely understand.
There's actually... And there's one other question that I actually wanted to ask you before we start.
Okay.
Because it seemed to me from the submission from the zoning administrator that the provisions that have been cited most recently were not what was cited in 2023.
Or 2025 in the denial letters.
Right. And the question that I have for you, because I'm going to consider it, the question I have for you is, do you want to brief that? Do you want a supplemental brief on that?
We can, we're prepared to respond to it today. I do think, and again, not to jump ahead, but there is an objection to introducing, that's the whole point of the new rules of procedure that went into effect in November of last year, is to prevent a surprise smoking gun attack at the time of hearing. I'm not accusing the department of doing that, but two days ago, their argument changed. And that, I think the board should be aware of that, because that's not the basis of the denial that occurred in '23, the denial that resulted from our reconsideration request or the updated denials in '25. So it's an issue that we're obviously going to raise and discuss, and we can respond to. I don't know if a full briefing is required, and I think we leave it to the board to make a decision based on that.
Well, so, and that's why I, before we get into it, I want to give you the opportunity to...
Let me consult with Michael quickly.
Absolutely.
Sure, we're actually, we're going to proceed today, and we'll make the oral argument on the new information to the best of our ability.
Okay.
And we'll leave it to the board to make a decision from there.
Okay. And then Commissioner Schiller had one other preliminary question before we begin.
The, I know this area well. I drive by it at least once a week, probably more often. So my question is, are we talking about, the building is the whole block, right? So in a look to me, and to me, I mean, I've seen that there's the same conditions on the north side of the building and the south side. So what are we talking about?
We're only talking about the two wall spaces on the north elevation.
Okay.
Those are the, so the left is under a permit application, the right's under a separate permit application, but it's the same information.
And this, this is...
I'm sorry. So we're discussing only the two north-facing signs, not the south-facing sign. The reason it's shown as two appeals is because the left sign is its own permit and the right is its own permit.
I had one other preliminary question, just because I did see that the letters from the zoning administrator were in, the denial was in 2023. Why are we in 2025 and hearing this appeal just now?
So we went through, we initially tried to avoid an appeal, and because we thought, and I don't want to get to the merits of the case, but we thought that there was substantial evidence to say, okay, this is more likely than not, this was, these have been signs since the 60s.
Did this come before us in 2023?
No, no, no.
Because I remember a similar one.
We had, that was a different...
Okay, different.
Different location, different applicant.
Okay.
Frankly, Chairman, we were in a position where, given the city's position, the department's position, we had to kind of weigh where the board was at. And at that point, we only had four board members. That fourth board member wasn't replaced until Commissioner Schiller made it onto the board. At that point, our denials had, the 45 days had expired, so we resubmitted. And I've been working with staff both at law and at DPD. They've been great. They issued the new denial letters, and we were able to move forward. But a significant part of our decision was to delay filing because we wanted to give ourselves an opportunity to try and fill in the gaps that the zoning administrator cited in his letter. And then at the same time, we knew that we had a four-person board, and on a case like this, a two-two is a loss. So we wanted to give ourselves the mathematical, I'm not a mathematician, but 60% is better than 100%, so...
Sure. All right. So with that, let's have you give us, first of all, I'm admitting the materials into the record for both the applicant, for the appellant and the appellee. Those will be admitted into the record.
I did.
And I would appreciate a brief overview of what you've already submitted, and I'll let you go longer on the newer information.
Thank you, thank you. So again, Chairman Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks, on behalf of Outdoor Impact. Outdoor Impact is the sign company with the lease rights to the two signs at the subject property. We're here appealing the zoning administrator's decision to not recognize legal nonconforming status and ultimately not permit the existing off-premise advertising signs at 5906 North Clark Street. Again, not trying to read the memo into the record, but we started this process by applying for sign permits for the existing displays on the building's north-facing wall. The city initially denied the applications and took the position that new off-premise advertising signs would not be permitted at the subject property. And actually, to that point, we agree that based solely on today's ordinance, we could not comply with the site requirements to establish new off-premise signs at the property. However, it's our position that the subject signs are legal nonconforming, off-premise advertising signs that were properly established prior to the 1990 and then subsequent 2004 amendments to the ordinance, and they've been in continuous use in existence since. Now, in terms of timeline, my office became involved, excuse me, after the initial permit applications were denied. Our approach was to ask reconsideration of the zoning administrator based on the information that was contained in our hearing package. So again, to support legal nonconforming status, the applicant provided a detailed timeline and 18 exhibits, which included photos of the sign dating back to August 15th of 1965, several different advertising displays that appeared on the wall over a 50-year span, photos of an ad actually being hand-painted on the wall that was from 2015, a 1974 iDOT permit, and a photo of the corresponding iDOT tag that's actually still on the building today. And the zoning administrator provided a response dated July 28th of '23 stating that, quote, "There was insufficient evidence to show these signs have been in continuous use in existence since 1970," or since the 1970s. I'm sorry, I quoted it. Now, it went on to state that the signs were being treated as abandoned and must be removed. Now, of course, we disagree with that position, and we subsequently obtained updated denial letters and filed our applications to bring the case to the board. Now, we understand it's our burden to show that the zoning administrator erred. We believe that the timeline and 18 exhibits provided with our reconsideration requests and also with our appeal that, again, span 1965 to 2021, should be more than sufficient to establish that it's more probably true than not that the subject signs have been in continuous use in existence since at least 1965. And that's the standard, Chairman. It's more probably true than not. Instead, we believe the administrator erroneously required proof beyond a reasonable doubt. In fact, the administrator's letter specifically cites the gaps in the timeline, and his position would essentially require any sign applicant to show photos of legal nonconforming displays dated every 363 days, because of leap years, to stay within the 12-month continuous use rule. More importantly, that position contradicts established Illinois case law concerning the abandonment of legal nonconforming rights. And again, I'm getting there, just give me a little bit more room. As highlighted in the memo, Illinois courts have required, quote, "Evidence of voluntary conduct carrying the implication that the owner intended to discontinue the nonconforming use." Clearly, that's not the case here. We have an appellate showing a 60-year history of usage with 18 supporting exhibits and an overt attempt to permit the existing signs, not relinquish them. Now, on Wednesday of this week, the administrator filed two additional documents for the board to consider in this appeal. Frankly, the documents present a new argument, as we discussed, a rationale for the department's denial. And I want to be clear that the term alteration does not appear in any of the prior correspondence or either denial letter, but now it's essentially the basis of the city's position. So that clearly, that alteration argument was not cited as a reason or rationale for the original denial or the 2025 updated denial that got us before the board. I want to make sure that's extremely clear for the record. Even so, the documents that were submitted, I'm actually going to go in reverse order. The administrator's document that states it's highlighted Exhibit 16, July 2018, that's, I believe it's the second in order. Chair? I have a copy, too.
I'm there.
Okay. So now that's offered to support, that information or that document's offered to support that the signs were altered and that alteration amounted to an abandonment. And the administrator's new argument is obviously different, as we stated, from the original position that there was insufficient evidence of continuous use, but we can still, again, we could still address it. First, the administrator is asking you to compare two photos, Exhibits 10 and 13. I want to also be clear, these are the photos that we submitted in support. They show different displays being used at different times. However, focusing on only two of the photos ignores the 10 other photos showing that the same larger wall space was regularly used for signage dating back to 1965. Specifically, our Exhibits 3, 5, 6, 7, and 9 show various displays, sometimes two or three, on the wall space. The fact that the bottom or any portion of the sign was not used for a period of time is not evidence of an unpermitted alteration or purposeful discontinuation of use. Section 17150504 clearly states that, quote, "Change of message or the substitution of panels or faces on nonconforming signs is permitted without affecting the legal status of the nonconforming sign." That's exactly what's happening here, actively changing messaging or ad displays within an overall sign area. Those facts are consistent with the Illinois Supreme Court holding that from the efforts of the property owner in that case to rent or sell property for the nonconforming use. It cannot be said that they intended to abandon the nonconforming use. And that language is from Douglas v. Melrose Park. Illinois courts have since added that temporary nonoccupancy does not amount to abandonment, and that's an Illinois appellate court decision in McCoy v. Knoxville. The fact that individual sign displays did not always use the entire sign area does not amount to an unpermitted alteration of either nonconforming sign. Now, the second... Now, the second exhibit, which is probably first in order, I'm sorry, Chair, uh, with fifty-nine oh six North Clark Street, underlined at the top, shows the current conditions of the property. Again, the uh, white paint placeholders are a permitted change of face and they have remained in place during the pendency of zoning review and, and this denial process. Uh, I'm sorry, this appeal process. But the act of preserving the wall with paint that distinguishes it from the rest of the building in the same area that's been used for advertising signs since nineteen sixty-five for the purpose of obtaining permits for compliance, again, are overt acts to preserve a non-conforming use, not relinquish it. Lastly, we know uh, as of July twenty-eighth, twenty-three, that the administrator took the position that the two signs had been abandoned. We're unaware of when the alleged abandonment occurred, uh, but that's been the consistent position from the department. I'd remind the board that Section seventeen fifteen oh five oh six D and E uh, state that no building permits or license, business licenses shall be issued for a building on which an abandoned sign that needs to be removed hasn't been removed. Chairman, our summary memo provided uh, an uninterrupted permit history uh, for the property through the data filing. And it identified four active business license accounts at the subject property. So based on that information alone, it's more reasonable than not to conclude that the city is not treating either sign as being abandoned. Taking all of this information together, Chairman, it's our position that the off-premise signs were legally established pursuant to the standards and requirements in place in nineteen sixty-five. And it is more probably true than not that they have remained in continuous use in existence without any unpermitted alterations ever since. We respectfully ask the board to overturn the denials and recognize legal non-conforming status so that both type, both signs can obtain valid permits and this issue could be put to rest for good. Um, I do have uh, Mr. Joel Byron, uh, the President of Outdoor Impact, the, the sign company. Uh, and also uh, Ms. Pavlicek, the owner of the property. Um, she's actually owned the property since the seventies and uh, again, can offer information about the history.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I want to uh, turn now to uh, the zoning administrator. Um, and then I think we'll open it up for questions at that time. Uh, sir, could you uh, state your name and position for the record?
Uh, Kyle Bartlett, Assistant Zoning Administrator.
Okay. Uh, proceed.
So I have a written statement. Would you like me just to read the written statement or?
Uh, you, you can read the written statement. If you're going to read the written statement, I would suggest that you just watch your tempo. Because we do have a court reporter here and when people are reading from something, they tend to speak very fastly and, and that doesn't work for the court reporter.
No problem. So the appeal being sought today is regarding the zoning administrator's decision to deny two applications for off-premise signs located on the north side of fifty-nine oh six North Clark Street. The denial of these two proposed signs are related to non-compliance with Section seventeen twelve, one thousand three E regarding the size of the signs. Seventeen twelve, one thousand six A and seventeen twelve, one thousand six H regarding the location restriction for an off-premise sign. Regarding the position of the appellant, that these two signs are existing non-conforming signs, it is the burden of the subject landowner or the representative to prove a non-conformity exists. Based on the information submitted to our office, this burden has not been met. We have been provided with eighteen exhibits from the appellant, trying to prove that a sign has existed at certain times since nineteen sixty-five. Pursuant to Section seventeen fifteen oh five oh six dash B, any non-conforming off-premise sign that is not used or for which a valid permit does not exist for a continuous period of twelve months or more will be deemed to have been abandoned. Exhibit four to Exhibit five shows a fifteen-year gap where no information is provided. Exhibit five to Exhibit six shows a five-year gap where there was a change of face during that time period. Exhibit nine to Exhibit ten shows a three-year gap with the western sign having a change of face. Due to the prolonged periods of no information being provided, we are unable to determine that a sign has continued to exist for a continuous period of twelve months or more. From the provided exhibits, we can see that these signs have had multiple changes of faces during their history. While when the signs were first established, there may have been no permitting requirements for painted wall signage. The more recent change of faces that were done in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen would have required a sign permit for this work. Pursuant to Section seventeen fifteen oh five oh four, a change of face is permissible and would not be a reason to lose a non-conforming sign status. But that section does note that the work is subject to a building permit. Based on that, the alteration would not meet the allowable alterations of seventeen fifteen oh five oh four and would lose its non-conforming sign status. Additionally, per seventeen dash twelve dash zero seven zero nine, signs erected, constructed, or structurally altered that are required to have a permit that were erected, constructed, or altered without a permit are prohibited. There is currently an open violation for these two signs from twenty nineteen. Regarding the exhibits that were provided by the appellant, the eastern sign is shown expanded when comparing Exhibit ten to Exhibit thirteen. The sign expanded in size vertically when you compare the provided images. Section seventeen dash fifteen dash zero five zero four explicitly notes what is permitted as an alteration which would not lose a non-conforming sign status, where the expansion of a sign is not covered. This results in the loss of any existing non-conforming designation. Lastly, and more recently, sometime between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, both signs appeared to have been completely removed by being painted white, thus no longer meeting the definition of a sign, which is materials placed or constructed or light projected that, one, conveys a message or image and, two, is used to inform or attract the attention of the public. With both signs having been removed for about five years, any new sign would need to meet the current sign ordinance, which these two sign permit applications do not do.
Thank you. Um, all right. I'm going to start uh, with a question.
Okay, I, I, do I have an opportunity to just provide a short rebuttal?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Chairman, I, I, I understand this is the forum to have the debate. I don't want to turn it into um, a back and forth between the assistant commissioner and myself. Um, the first part about this being, these being proposed are new signs. We agree that new signs could not be permitted. These are signs that date back to nineteen sixty-five. It also says, uh, in Section seventeen oh five oh six B, uh, which the uh, assistant administrator cited, it's an either-or clause. It's not used or doesn't have a permit. We believe that the information provided clearly shows that there was continuous use. Um, I, I go back to, uh, it was highlighted that there are gaps in the information that we have available to us. I, I understand that there's discretion involved, but at the same time, showing a photo of a, a sign, a non-conforming sign, every three hundred and sixty-three days is proof beyond a reasonable doubt. We're asking, we asked the administrator and now we're asking the zoning board, taking all of the information together, is it more probably true than not that the signs have existed at the property? And with respect to uh, the expansion of the sign, we, we did kind of address that in our uh, case in chief. The signs have always been the size they are. Various advertisers have used different portions of it over the years. Sometimes it's one large sign. Sometimes it's three individual uh, sign uh, signs that are being displayed. It, it, it changes by the market. The, the fact and what the Illinois Supreme Court looks to is, are you continuing to market it? And I think the, the, the good news is, even with the uh, exhibits that the the administrator's office cites to, the uh, it always, it shows signs. It was not until twenty twenty-one that we made the decision to whiten out the signs and use them as placeholders while we worked through the, the, the process. Unfortunately, we were denied by the administrator. Our reconsideration request was denied and it forced the appeal that brought us here today. There's been absolutely no um, intent or voluntary act to relinquish the signs. Whiting them out while we apply for permits, taking those two steps together is our, our overt acts to keep the sign.
Okay. Um, seventeen fifteen oh five oh six B one, um, which I noted from your submission provides that any non-conforming off-premise sign that is not used or for which a valid permit does not exist for a continuous period of twelve months or more will be deemed to have been abandoned.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think your argument is that the non-conforming off-premise sign has been used, right?
Hundred percent.
Doesn't, doesn't fall under there. But what about the second part of that? Or for which a valid permit does not exist for a continuous period of twelve months or more will be deemed to have been abandoned?
Well, that's just that this sign, the establishment of both signs, I say this sign, I mean both. Both signs are legal non-conforming and do not require a permit for their legal establishment or their continued use. So the, the, it's an either-or clause. Right? If, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not asking you.
I read it as you have to, the way I'm reading it is you have to comply with both of these.
Or.
Right. But it's.
Not and. And would say.
It's, it's one, it's.
One or the other.
Either one of these will be deemed to have been abandoned. That's how I'm reading it. So either any non-conforming off-premise sign that is not used will be deemed to have been abandoned or for which a valid permit does not exist for a continuous period of twelve months will be deemed to have been abandoned.
And I want to be crystal clear that we satisfy that requirement on either front. First, there's, we believe that we've shown proof, again, more, more probably true than not, that the signs have been in continuous use since nineteen sixty-five. So that's uh, section one. Section two is for a building or for a sign that didn't require a permit. I'm not sure how we could apply a permit requirement to a sign that was established before there was a sign permit for this specific type of sign. Had these signs had lights or had they been supported by structure as far back as the, I believe, fifty-seven code, there would have been a permit requirement, not for the sign, but for the electric or for the structural support. That's not the case. These are painted signs on a building wall. They did not require a permit, so I don't know how the board or how the administrator can cite not having a permit for a use that doesn't require a permit as the basis for abandonment. To me, that doesn't make logical sense. I'd ask the board to conclude the same.
Well, from what I gathered from the Assistant Zoning Administrator is that as of the, the changes of face in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen would have required a sign permit for the work pursuant to Section seventeen fifteen oh five oh four?
Had there been an initial permit, there would, there would have been a requirement. There's no permit for us to get because our use predates the permit requirement. Now, all of these efforts are to now obtain a permit so that we could put this issue to rest. And when advertisers change, we could cite to, if we're approved by the board, we could cite to a permit that issued and then there is a legal use. Right? It's recognized as, as fully conforming, not legal non-conforming based on a prior code.
So it's your, it's the appellant's position that because it was legal non-conforming to begin with, once a requirement in the, in the zoning ordinance required a permit for a change of the sign, the appellant still wasn't subject to that permitting because of the prior legal non-conforming use?
The code section says that non-conforming signs, the, it's in the policy provisions cited in our brief. The policy provision is to bring all signs into compliance with a code, with a permit. We're doing that so that we're eligible to get the permit, the, the change of face that's cited. But to say that we were not, we, we had abandoned the sign because we didn't have a permit, but a permit wasn't required for the legal establishment, I, I don't follow that logic.
Well, um, when maybe this is a question for the Assistant Zoning Administrator. When did the requirement come in, in Section seventeen fifteen oh five oh four that a change of face is permissible and would not be reason to lose a non-conforming sign status? Um, but it, but it's subject to a building permit. When did that come into effect?
So I mean, regarding the requirement for a building permit for a wall painted face, I, I couldn't speak to that since it's a Department of Building requirement um, for that permitting requirement. So um, I, I can't give you an exact year of when that did change. But um, to, you know, maybe the appellant's point of when the sign was first established, it might not have required a building permit for the wall painted sign. Over the years, over, you know, time, you know, obviously our text changes, the building code changes. So any amendment, you know, any change, any alteration to a wall painted sign now requires a building permit. So that was, you know, the, uh, the point I was trying to get across with these constant change of face, faces that we see in these exhibits is that at a certain point, a wall painted sign permit was required for these alterations.
So the two comments to that are, he, he just said a certain point, but can't tell you when. More importantly, we're talking about a sign that was legally established before any of those requirements went into effect. And I do agree with the, the administrator, the uh, office that if we installed lights or if we put in some type of structure, yes, we would absolutely be required to uh, obtain a permit. But to maintain a legally established painted wall sign in perpetuity, which we have the right to do, as a legally established sign.
To means painting.
Then say, and chain, and it says in the code, it's a, a, when we talk about alterations. First off, an off-premise sign, what's different from an off-premise sign and an on-premise sign? An on-premise sign is a business ID, like a McDonald's sign. Uh, if you go to McDonald's, you see the golden heart, that's on-premise. We, the whole industry, the whole purpose of an off-premise sign is to be able to change the advertisement. So one month it's Google, one month it's Yahoo, and, and it changes and it's, it's fluid. We showed that in our, in our application. We, we showed that from nineteen sixty-five to two thousand and twenty-one, there were various advertisers. All painted wall, all following the rules that were in place when the sign was legally established. The fact that a subsequent rule, permit requirement came into effect for change of face would apply if there was already a building permit for it. We didn't need a building permit for what we have.
So you, you're saying that once the.
Sure. What's the point of, I'm sorry, no, no.
Hold on, let me, let me just.
Yeah.
Get my thought out. Um, you're, you're saying that once the building permit for a change of sign um, gets implemented, you still don't have to conform with that because of the prior legal non-conforming use? You're not subject to the building permit requirement for a change of sign?
Well, I absolutely, yes. And the reason, what's the point of legal non-conforming status? If, if a rule changes two months after the sign's established, they have to get a permit. That the whole, the whole point here is that the size. Well, but my point is the whole size, the size of the sign, the location of the sign, which was allowed in nineteen sixty-five isn't allowed in twenty twenty-five. Right?
Right.
So we had the legally established sign. We changed face over the period of sixty years, fifty-five years. We're trying to get a permit to bring it into compliance. We're being told, no, we didn't have sufficient evidence or information. Again, everything we're talking about right now, none of this is in the denial letter. None of this is in uh, the correspondence between us and the department. This is coming up today. My, my point in all of this is it doesn't change the fact that it was a legal, legally established, non-conforming sign. And to impose permit requirements retroactively defeats the point of legal non-conformity because at that point, we can't even get a permit. In twenty fifteen, we can't get a permit for the signs because they don't comply with the code.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I mean, I'm, let's think of, of a different context for a second, you know, because we see legal non-conforming uses with regard to, you know, building setbacks and all of that all the time. And when there's a change that a property owner wants to make, they have to come, you know, before us for a variation and get that variation, even though it was legal non-conforming and they, and they get the variation and, and the basis is they show, hey, it was legal non-conforming before, so please give us the, you know, the variation now. How is that different from? Um, okay, we have a, a legal non-conforming sign. Now there's this new requirement that we need a permit every time we change the sign. But we're just going to say we don't have to comply with that because we have a, a prior legal non-conforming sign?
No. The difference is, Chairman, what we talked about, that signs that are not illuminated and are not supported by structure did not require a permit. What's different is, in the example you gave, if I have a non-conforming building and I seek a variation to expand the non-conforming building, there's a permit requirement. There's a structural permit requirement. There isn't the same requirement for a painted wall sign. That's the, that's the issue. That's the issue, that's just the issue. And I would also offer that the change of face has been applied to uh, on-premise signs. The McDonald's that then maybe is replaced by a Burger King. The change of face is not applied in the uh, off-premise in practice with the Department of Buildings. And again, I believe uh, the Assistant Commissioner stated that this is a building code issue, a building's department. And again, I believe the Assistant Commissioner stated that this is a building code issue, a buildings department issue. From a zoning perspective, it's legal nonconforming. That's, that's where our whole argument lies.
Any, any response to that?
Yeah. So Chairman, you were actually making my point essentially that, you know, if there is this code change, you know, code, code text change for the permit requirements, your existing nonconformity can remain, but if you are making that alteration, you do still trigger a new building permit for that.
But an alteration that's permitted without any change is exactly changing face. Changing face in panels is one of the exceptions that doesn't require. It's in the code, it's in the section that Patrick cited.
Yes, but 17150504 specifically notes that subject requirements for building permits, you know. So any alterations are subject to building permit requirements.
We completely understand that. But again, the alteration of any nonconforming sign other than for change of message or the substitution of panels or faces on non-high-rise buildings shall not be, shall, hold on, shall cause the sign, shall not cause the sign to lose legal nonconforming status. It's in the code section. It's the top of the second page, I believe, Chairman, of the
We're in 17150504, and I think we're looking at that second paragraph of it?
Right.
Which, which states the alteration of any nonconforming sign other than for I, routine maintenance and repair, double I, change of message, or the substitution of panels or faces on non-high-rise building signs, or triple I as otherwise provided for vintage signs. Okay. Shall cause the sign to lose its status as a legal nonconforming sign, and such status shall not be reestablished.
Number two, II is our, is our exception.
If I could just speak to that, Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, and then, you know, kind of continuing on that last sentence, the language added in the section by the 2013 ammendatory ordinance is intended to clarify rather than change existing law. So the existing law was that first paragraph where it noted subject requirements for building permits.
Okay.
But I think, I just want to make sure we're reading that in totality. The except, exception language is provided in the second paragraph, which is the basis of our, well, part of the basis of our case.
So, right. So I think where we're all seeing the battleground right now is that first paragraph has this parenthetical that the change of message is subject to requirements for building electrical permits. The second paragraph says the alteration of any nonconforming sign, double I, other than for change of message, shall cause the sign to lose its status as a legal nonconforming sign. And then there's that last sentence, the language added to this section by this 2013 ammendatory ordinance is intended to clarify rather than change existing law.
Not sure it did that, but.
Well.
No, I think, all kidding aside, I think the, if we could break that up, I just want to make sure this is part of the record. We, you discussed whether there's a building or electric permit. Again, the electric relates to illumination. There's no illumination. This isn't a billboard sign supported by structure, your typical, what you'd see.
Yeah, I think we can, we can put electrical to the side. Let's-
Or structure, or permit, because it also says a building permit. So building, but there's no structure to permit. Right? This is a wall sign. So follow the next, the second paragraph. The alteration of a nonconforming sign other than, and that's where, that's what we've done.
Let me, let me just make, make sure that, that I'm understanding it correctly. Question for the Assistant Zoning Administrator. Is the change of message on a nonconforming sign subject to a building permit? And if so, what provision is that?
So the change of message or a change of face to any sign permit requires a building permit. The building permit requirements are chapter 13-20 outside of this zoning ordinance.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
I'm familiar with this. I'm very familiar with this aspect of the zoning ordinance and building ordinance until 2011, so I have a question. Okay, I'm sorry.
Order can hear you.
My question is, do you know when non-electric wall painted signs were the inclusion in them and requiring permits when that occurred?
Right. So unfortunately, since it is a building code standard, I don't have the information in front of me when that code changed. But I can say that, you know, looking at these dates, based on these exhibits that were provided, the more recent 2019, 2018 show change of face. At that time, there was a permit requirement for a wall painted sign.
I'm sorry, say that last sentence again, that there was a-
So based on the exhibits that were provided by the appellant, 2018, 2019 did show change of faces on those exhibits. There was a requirement for a building permit for the change of face for a wall painted sign. And I would even say that-
Where is that? That's what I'm not able to find.
The requirement? So, I mean, again, that's, so that's chapter 13-20. So that's the building code.
What the Assistant Zoning Administrator just said, do you dispute that a, a wall painted sign required a building permit in 2018 and 2019?
The legal establishment of a wall painted sign, a new wall painted sign, came into effect in 1990. It was subsequently amended in 2004 when the redraft occurred. So I would say as far back as 1990, if there was no historic photos of this sign from 1965, if there was nothing else to substantiate it, and somebody just came in and said, you know what, I want to make these walls signs, they would have had to comply and obtain a permit 1990 forward. And I believe the administrator, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I believe the administrator's assistant administrator said that a permitted sign required a change of face permit. We, that's exactly our argument. We didn't have a permitted sign because we're a legal nonconforming sign. That, that it's, we can't get around that. You're, you're right. I mean, we've, we've been able to maintain the sign from 1965 till, call it 21, 22, when we started the permitting process with the city. Saying not, and these are not the reasons that were issued in the denial letter for denying the permit application. They went back to, there's just not enough evidence. Well, we thought that was wrong and we filed our appeal. Now, there's, the arguments change that it was altered, that it was change of face, change of face requires a permit. No, it doesn't. The code section, specific to the definition of alteration, unpermitted alteration specifically exempts change of face. Change of face did not complicate, did not frustrate, did not lead to abandonment under the code provision, the zoning ordinance provision that, that you're tasked with reviewing.
Is it, is it your position that by not citing some of these provisions that we're talking about today, that the zoning administrator has waived those provisions of the zoning ordinance?
I believe so. I believe that's incumbent on both our office and the administrator's office. Now, you still get to review, you know, and give credit and weight to the provisions that you choose. But if we're, and our debate now is really on the second, the exception clause. So you can absolutely consider it. But I think it needs to be considered in the context that as a change of message is accepted, it's not an unpermitted alteration. The contrary, it's a permitted alteration.
Okay. Want to switch gears for, well, it's not really so much of a switch gear, but slightly change of topic. In your brief, you cited a bunch of cases in response to, I think it was 17150506C. You argued that the case law looks at abandonment very differently and requires evidence of voluntary conduct carrying the implication that the owner intended to discontinue the nonconforming use. None of those cases, from what I could tell, addressed a ordinance that actually defined what abandonment means. Is that true?
I believe you're correct. I did not, did not read. Although I think the challenges that were brought in those cases were based on a city or a government agency enforcing the notion of abandonment on a legal nonconforming use.
Right. But, but an undefined term of abandonment.
Of what abandonment is. Correct.
Okay. Because is it, is it your position that the provisions of the zoning ordinance that define abandonment are are, are just, are overruled by the cases that you cited?
I think that the Illinois Supreme Court would, yes. I think that the Illinois Supreme Court in case law, we can't enforce code provisions that are contrary to state law or Illinois case law. And I also think- But the one other point is, I think what I'm asking the board to consider is, in the context of a judge reviewing a legal nonconforming right, that's the rationale. I'm almost, I think the holdings and the rationale that an overt act or voluntary conduct showing that you wanted to get rid of a use, that's really the, I keep saying basis, but that's really the point. Because everything that we've done is contrary. It's to try and keep it, not, not give it up. And we're being told, wait, I, I need, we're being told, we were told in 2021 that the signed permit was denied. We were told in 2022, denial letters, or I'm sorry, 23 denial letters issued reconsideration for multiple reasons. Right? It's insufficient, at that point, it was just insufficient information. Now, after the denial letters issued, after we filed our appeal, filed our brief, all of these other issues, it's almost like how many, how many bites of the apple can we give the city to say, well, wait a second, what about this? What about? That's what the point of zoning review is. Making a permit application, this all should have been flushed out ahead of time. I still think we've addressed it. I still don't believe that a legal nonconforming sign that didn't require a permit was subsequently subject to new permit requirements 30, 40 years later because the specific change is not an alteration that requires, it's permitted, it's allowed. It doesn't change the, the, the legal nonconforming status. It doesn't, it doesn't jeopardize that. So again, taking it all together, that's-
But you, but you agree with me that 170506B and 17, I'm sorry, 17150506B and 17150506C have not been expressly overruled by an Illinois court, have they?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because here's my thing there is, I don't think that we're the, the board to answer that question.
I agree.
So I just wanted to put that out there.
The one other point, because we did get into the technical requirements of a permit requirement, I think it's extremely interesting that the code, the zoning ordinance, and I cited this in my, the case in chief, but I want to remind the board. Section 17150506D and E state that no building permits or business licenses shall be issued for a building upon which an abandoned sign hasn't, that needs to be removed, hasn't. And again, we provided four active, current active licenses and for, and a 60-year-plus history of building, uninterrupted building permits. So it's, it's curious that we're being cited by the city for failure to permit a change of face, which is an allowed alteration. But at the same time, building permits and licenses have issued without interruption for the property, and now they're saying, no, it was abandoned.
Response to that?
Yeah. So unfortunately, you know, there is no hold on this property where an examiner from Business Affairs Concealed Protection would have seen that hold to be aware that there was, you know, a violation with the sign or abandoned sign here. So the fact that a business license might have been issued or another permit was issued for this building, I would say that does not affirm that this is a nonconforming sign.
Go ahead.
But the permit is a permit from the building department required by the building department, so they would know if there was a permit or not, wouldn't they?
So it depends what the permit was for. I mean, there's electrical permits that only the electrical reviewers are looking, so they're not looking at signs on the building, for example.
So my, my question is, is the application then on the city or the applicant to flag potential issue for the issuance of a building permit? Wouldn't it be on the city in order to, in order to establish internally as to whether or not a building permit should or should not be issued based on the abandonment of a nonconforming sign?
Sure. It should be on the city, you know, to flag this issue for a property. And unfortunately, you know, it wasn't done here. This violation that is currently on the property for these two signs is only from 2019. So here is, you know, based on all these exhibits that these signs have been changing, they've, they've been changing sizes without the knowledge of the city, so.
Could I just ask, sorry, this is a little bit of an unsequitur. Could I get, without going through your entire set of materials, could you give me the case again for the intent to continue usage that you cited?
So the, the highlight cases, Douglas v. Melrose Park, and I, my brief cites it, and then there were-
I've got copies of them, Swappy.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, but it's all, it's all in there.
I appreciate it. That was just that one, that one issue and, and the overt act to continue use, I would like to-
And that's been supported by McCoy v. Knoxville, and again, all in the brief.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I think that we have what we need on this to deliberate. So I want to thank everyone for your input here. Very informative, very interesting, very good briefs. We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on page seven, case number 28225S, the department is requesting a continuance for this matter. I believe that they're still working on plans with the applicant.
I'm sorry, what number?
28225S, 184242 West North Avenue.
Okay.
On page seven.
Okay. So 28225S will be continued to September 19, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
25S, 4106 West 63rd Street.
Good morning. All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you, here, let me ask you a question. Are you going to be in? Do you, here, let me ask you a question. Are you going to be an interpreter today?
Yeah.
Okay. If you could first point the microphones towards you. And we'll start with you, sir. Could you state your name for the record?
Sure. It's Jose Lozano.
Okay. And is the language Spanish that you'll be interpreting?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate English to Spanish and, and, and Spanish to English in this matter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, now let's turn to the applicant. Sir, could you state your name for the record, please? Okay. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have the hearing packet that was, you can put your hand down. We do have the hearing packet that was submitted for this matter. Do you swear or affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And can you tell us just a little bit about your experience in the barbershop business?
I started in the barbershop business about 20 years ago. I've been on 63rd for almost about six, seven years. Yeah, so I had a barbershop previously on 63rd, but I wanted to move to a bigger place, but unfortunately, I didn't know the whole process of moving from one area to another location. Therefore, that's why I'm here.
We do have a recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development that recommends approval of the proposed barbershop. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I allowed to read?
One second. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Okay. Which, this is a special use to establish a barbershop?
Yes.
And which one of you is the applicant? You are. Could you state your name for the record?
Stuart Scott Montgomery.
Okay, and sir? Okay. And we do have the hearing packet submitted for this matter. Do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We're going to take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
25525Z and 2625Z, 1427 West Irving.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Prikarsky for the petitioner.
Good afternoon. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, if you want to give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Certainly. The, this case involves a piece of property that measures 25 by 150 feet. It's improved with a, two houses, two buildings. One, the front building is a brick single family. The back building, which you see, is a framed, single family. My client lives with his family in the framed, single family. They are seeking to extend, first of all, to lower the basement floor so as to effectively legalize the use in the future as, as a habitable space. Secondly, they are extending the side walls so as to be able to create a carport. There's an existing carport, which is in substandard condition. They're putting in a new carport. As I said, the client, the family lives there. There are two children and the husband and wife.
And the names of your witnesses?
Okay. First of all, seated to my right is my associate, Thomas Prikarsky. Next is Mr. Charles Benson, who is the applicant. And next to him is Ms. Rhonda Rossen, who's with the architectural firm of Leanne Hewsetons.
Okay. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Sorry, I didn't get talked to you earlier. It's actually a little bit off when I spoke with Leanne to confirm that we're actually, seven feet would be habitable. And we're going less than seven feet. So it's not technically habitable. And basically, the main reason we're going down is they get a lot of water that comes into the basement. So we're, so it has to do with the water coming and reinforcing the foundation wall. So it's not, it's not becoming habitable. It's just looking more at the water maintenance issue within the basement. I just wanted to clarify that one.
So explain that a little bit more. The relief that you're requesting, it's not changing, is it?
No.
Okay.
But just the description for the basement work.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, but that has, I don't think that has anything to do with what he's here for.
Okay. 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 Go ahead.
Question, this is actually about the water.
Yeah.
So you're not changing where water is now absorbed. You're just making sure it doesn't end up in the basement.
Exactly.
Where is it going to go?
Oh, right now, we're going to put a French drain. And we're, right now, the, the current foundation is slightly underneath grade. So we're reinforcing that wall and then direct into the drain tub.
And the drain will, will, where will the drain drain into?
And then that's something I think we're going to look at for the building permit. Or at least, I don't remember offhand where we're dr- turning it to. Wherever, let's see, new drain, oh, connected to the sump, it says. We're connected to the sump pump.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, going slightly out of order. Page 5 through 6925S, 4823 West Irving, Park.
All right, will everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Sean Cologne.
And could you state your name for the record?
Dana Wexler.
Okay. You are here to open up a hair salon, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Which, which one of you is the applicant?
I am.
You are, okay. Do, and, and what's your role here, sir?
Co-owner in the building.
Building, okay. All right. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. You didn't take part in the hearing packet, did you?
No.
Okay.
No, just the, just the purchase of the building.
Got it. Okay. I see we've got a letter of no objection from Alderman Gardner. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience?
Yes. I have 20 years in the industry. I currently have an established salon in Lincoln Square. I'm looking to expand, hire, take on employment in the community. And that's how long I've been in the industry.
Excellent. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Could you raise your right hand, please?
My name is Aracely Sanchez.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Nicola Patinsky, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Samuel VP Banks, located at 221 North LaSalle Street, 38th floor. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Pure Elegance Hair Salon LLC. The applicant is leasing the ground floor retail unit within the two-story mixed-use building located at 5141 South Cadze Avenue. The applicant is proposing to establish a hair salon and barbershop within that space. The proposed hair salon and barbershop will feature five workstations, one washing station, a restroom, and a reception area. The applicant intends to provide haircutting, styling, coloring, and hair treatment services. The applicant also intends on providing accessory skincare and waxing services. The applicant is a licensed cosmetologist and intends on managing the business and providing client services. The applicant also intends on hiring three employees to provide client services and assist in running the proposed barbershop and hair salon. All service providers will be right, will be properly licensed in their trade. The proposed barbershop and hair salon will operate Mondays through Wednesdays from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Thursdays, Thursdays to Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sundays from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. In order to permit the use, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in the B3-1 zoning district, and there is at least one other personal service use located within 1,000 feet of the subject property. I have one witness that will be testifying today, the manager of the applicant, Ms. Aracely Sanchez. And with that, we're prepared to answer any questions.
Great. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thanks. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Nicola Patinsky, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Samuel VP Banks, located at 221 North LaSalle Street, 38th floor. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Kick the Budget LLC, DBA My Spa. The applicant is leasing a ground floor retail unit within the two-story mixed-use building located at 2925 West Belmont Avenue. The applicant intends to establish a massage service facility within that space. The proposed massage facility will feature a waiting area, two rooms for facials and waxing services, an open space with four massage chairs for fully clothed foot massages, a break room, and one restroom. The applicant intends to provide fully clothed foot massages and accessory skincare services, including facials and waxing services. The applicant will manage the business and intends on initially hiring one to two employees to assist in running the business. All service professionals will be properly licensed in their trade. The proposed massage establishment will operate Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM and eight, to 8:00 PM, and Saturday through Sunday from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In order to permit the proposed massage facility, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in the B3-1 zoning district. I have one witness that is available for testifying today, the manager of the applicant, Hao Xing Li.
Thank you. Sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Have you had the opportunity to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter that recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in this letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, good morning, sir. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Corey Sumner.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. All right, so you are here to establish a hair salon?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience?
I actually had a hair salon back in 2006 through 2008, but due to the recession, I had to close it down. I went to business with a restaurant, and also I have a sign company now. So I'm doubling back on the hair salon, because I got a decent opportunity to open a business up over there.
Okay. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Sure.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? Let me ask a question about the, this was continued because the Alderman wanted to have a meeting, is that right?
I spoke with him.
And, and how did that conversation go?
He said that it shouldn't be a problem for the location that I'm trying to get to, that I'm trying to actually get, so he left it at that.
Okay.
Never said he was sending anyone to court or anything. He spoke with me over the phone, called me, we had a conversation about it.
And he didn't voice.
And he did also tell me that it shouldn't be a problem getting a spot.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fatikas, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, Chair. And again, this is not a sign case, so. My name is Nick Fatikas with the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Chicago Title Land Trust number 800-239-3597. The applicant owns the subject property at 1942 North Orchard. The applicant is actually in the process of constructing a four-story, five-unit building and has permits for the work that's currently happening. He's now proposing to reorganize the rear decks and the open access to the roof deck proposed above the detached garage at the rear of the lot. And to do that, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the rear setback and relocate rear open spaces to the proposed roof deck. As you can see from the survey, the subject lot is irregularly shaped at the rear, and that's really the, the specific hardship the variations would help us overcome. And although we are seeking a technical rear setback reduction, it is only limited to that open stair connection. The footprint of the permitted building, as well as the footprint of the garage, will remain the way they are today. We have two witnesses on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Scott Bates, and our project architect, Mr. John Hannah. Happy to answer any questions you or the, or the board members have.
Thank you. Do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Actually, we have one, we have one.
Sorry. My two favorite subjects. Affordability and water. Um, so is this, uh, it's really, actually, I want to know if it's for sale or rent, the unit?
These are a for-sale project.
Okay, and the second question I have is, um, I was just trying to understand how water is going to be... Where the water goes.
So it's really, um, if we can go to even just the site plan? So there's space on, uh, we'll call it the top and bottom, the north and south of the, uh, uh, decks. Again, the deck is a permitted encroachment. It's that three-and-a-half-foot landing that connects to the roof deck. But that otherwise is open space that see...
There's no open space that was permeable previously that's being covered?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
All right, uh, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. I represent the applicant, 847 West Ainsley LLC. The applicant is seeking zoning variations to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback from 33 feet to 21.32 feet in order to construct new three-story raised wood decks at the rear of the existing four-story multifamily residence located at 847 Ainsley. The issue here is the physical condition of the property. The property is 60 by 110 feet. When my client, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Kopeck, would you please state your name?
James Kopeck.
And you are the member manager of the application?
Yes.
And would you please state your name? This is our architect.
Dualekso.
When we bought the property, the property, uh, had, uh, rear porches, which were actually encroaching further into the rear yard because of the 110-foot setback. We took those down and we then enclosed it. So what we're asking for is a variation that is less than what was there when we bought the property.
Okay. Has the work already been done?
Yes, some of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get sighted?
No.
No, we didn't get sighted. What happened was... When we... The assumption was that because we were making less of a variation that it didn't require to come in before you. We started the work. Neighbor said, "What are you doing?" They called me. We started, and we got to your...
Um, and it's the, it's the short lot depth that requires the...
Yeah, the 110 feet. If we were 125 feet, we would not be here for the variation.
All right, um, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
So, uh, are the units currently occupied?
No, the units, Jim?
Oh, no.
No, they're not, they're not occupied. One of the concerns is that we're, is we have to provide under the contract these closed, uh, porches, and we can't do it without the variation. So we're holding off closing on the properties.
Okay, so they're individual condos that are...
Yes, 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 sure.
And it included back porches? Okay, so, um, just a couple more questions. Just, I wasn't clear. Um, is park, is there parking on this lot? Is there parking included?
Yeah, there's parking for two spaces, parking for two spaces.
Have those been sold along with some of the units? Or have they...
Not yet.
That's your intention?
Pardon?
That will be sold?
There will be in time, but we're holding off on sales until we get resolved here.
And, um, the, and are all four units going to have a porch area? Two raised, will all of them have access to a porch area?
Each unit will have access to a porch.
Okay, and when, in the construction of these porches, is it affecting the permeable areas for water retention? Or the water flow, where the decks are?
No, I understand.
The first floor one is?
Essentially, again, prior to this, the, uh, porches were even further into the rear yard. So by bringing them closer to the building, I would, I, we haven't done a study, but I'm assuming that that would not adversely affect the water.
Uh, the reason I'm asking this is that we're not, uh, we don't get any information from the, uh, building department in terms of permits regarding water. But I, in many areas of the city, we've been having a lot of flooding. So I'm just, I'm, I'm going to be asking this consistently just to get a sense of, since you don't, you wouldn't know if the basement flooded previously, which is what I'd probably ask you if you'd said it was still occupied.
We would.
Um, but, but, but I think that, but I think that we, we hear so often, variations that affect the permeability of the ground. So that's why I'm asking the question, just to see if there's a relationship. And over time, maybe somebody can take a look at that. But that's why I'm asking the question.
Thank you for your comments.
So, um, did, uh, did you begin work without pulling permits? So you, how did you, how did you start work?
What happened was, we got a, uh, building permit for the building itself, seven units, from the building department. And the original plan had the porches on there. But then this issue came up, so we had to hold off. But I, it was a miscommunication on my part. When the carpentry stage came and the carpenters came to do the work inside in the building, I was out of town for 10 days. Neglected on my part to tell them that the porches, we have to hold off. But when I came back, they had started work on the porches. So, um, so I take responsibility for that.
Okay.
That was negligent on my part, and that's, that's all I can say.
Okay. But you're here now, and you're trying to correct.
Yes, yes.
And I've spoken to the neighbor, uh, who's most affected on this, and we, he's fine. He understands, and we've done some things for him.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, sir, could you, uh, raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. Uh, what I'd like to do today, there are three applications, uh, three variations. I'd like to take the first two because the purpose of this, the first two, is to, to establish the legality of the existing building when we divide the property. Property is approximately 7,027 feet of land. It is improved on Lot 26 with a two-unit, uh, building. Um, in order to divide the lot, we have to put that building into compliance, and that's the issues raised in the first two variations. And then I'd like to get to what we'd like to build on the other one, third. That would be okay?
Okay, uh, go ahead. Um, I mean, I, I kind of want to just take it all together. I, I mean...
Okay, I, I can do it. However, it just seems more logical to say you...
Let's just discuss it all, all at once.
Perfect. Then, in order, the first variation is to, um, reduce the west side setback from the required 2.24 feet to two feet, east to 3.1 feet, combined side yard setbacks from 5.62 to 5.1 to allow the subdivision of the existing zoning lot. A two-story building of the next adjacent lot, Lot Number 25, shall, will be, uh, is proposed for, uh, development. Case number 263, application for a variation to reduce the rear yard open space from the required 450 square feet to zero to allow the subdivision of the existing zoning lot. And then, case number 264, application for a variation to reduce the front setbacks from the required 21.84 to two feet, east side setback from four to zero, west to be combined side yard from 11.85 to two for proposed two-story, two-dwelling unit building with a detached two-car garage. As I mentioned, on Lot 26, the building was built approximately 100 years ago. And, um, in order to do the division of the property, we have to put that into compliance. The hardship there is that Lot 26's building is approximately 100 years old. In order to put it into compliance, it is an irregularly shaped lot. The, the irregularity is that it is approximately 125 feet perpendicular to Northwest Highway. But on the other, the south side is, it's approximately 101.23 feet. The lot area will go from the 7,062 feet to approximately 3,307 feet. Uh, property is owned RS2, RS3, I'm sorry, um, and it will remain. The property is grandfathered in under that RS3 provision, uh, so will not affect its two-unit designation. Going to, uh, the 264, the lot there is a triang, the hardship here is it is a triangular lot um, with dimensions of 101.25 by 73.60 by 125.20. The hardship is, this is how this property was constructed. Northwest Highway is a diagonal street there. It's between two other streets. It was not created by my client. As you are aware, as a board, uh, the, um... You need 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit in Lot 3, but because there are eight lots on here, uh, and, I'm sorry, nine lots and eight are two flats, we can refer to Section 172-0303B, which says that if more than 60% of the lots on that block are two flats, then we can waive that 2,500-square-foot requirement. Peter, would you please describe? Describe the, uh, new development that's being proposed and you, and the hardships that you have? Because you're not only the owner of the property, you're also an architect. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, Peter Sternyak. Um, the, as Paul mentioned, it's over 7,000 square feet of land with a two-flat to the side. Originally bought it 20 years ago with some future hopes to build on it. The time has come. The, as Paul mentioned, uh, almost all the, all of the buildings on the block historically are two flats. So we're using the Section 17, uh, dash 20303B to reduce the per-unit requirement of 1,500, which allows me to keep my existing two-unit at 5,407 and propose another two-unit as a matter of right, for this section. The, the difficulty here is, um, the triangular shape of, of the site needs reduction of, or correction of setbacks. And majority of my land is pushed towards Northwest Highway because that's where the base of the triangle is. The, it's not a straight facade, as you see in the drawings. There's actually a publication at NADIC. Yeah, it's, it's not quite, actually. Better representation here. So it's not quite a straight facade. So I'm catching the corners here at the, with the two feet. But in reality, where the, where the entrance is, it's, it's further in. It's 12 feet, 14 feet, 10 feet. And then I cut the corner to blend it into the block. The, um, and then I cut the corner not to have a jagged, sorry, jagged, uh... Corner at the monitor in Northwest Highway. So the... What's proposed is two units, um, but they're two stories with basement with separate entrances to, uh, make some families happy, I guess, down the road if I, if I'm able to build it and sell it. The, so that's the variation number three, the 264 case with, for the new building. The prior to the 262, 263 are for the old building. And interestingly enough, uh, case 263 reduces the, the rear open space to zero, where in fact, I have 569 square feet, but I'm lacking the 15-feet requirement that came in maybe a decade ago, maybe five years, five years ago. So I have 13 and 9 inches between my old garage that was shown and, and the old building. I cannot, I could maybe tear down the garage and comply, but it's, as of today, it's not 15 feet. That's why Carlos Ramirez says we cannot count it as open space. So it's not quite zero there. It's just, it's lacking that 15 feet. The setback at case 262 required is 2.2. I have 2.0. 100, 100 years ago, the building was built two feet away. Likely, my neighbors have similar setbacks. So we're correcting some historical dimensions here, um, in those first two cases.
Peter, you actually went to, and met with the neighbors here. Most of the neighbors on this block, the other two flats on the block have two-car garages, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're proposing, uh, three parking spaces for your two flat?
Correct, to comply.
So that basically the hardship here is the dimension of the property, the way, way it's set out, you do meet the, uh... Characteristics of the neighborhood because eight of the nine, um, properties are two flats on property. So I think, uh... We'll take any questions you have.
All right, first question. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. Um, I did note in the file that we've got a letter of objection from Alderman Gardner. Have you spoken with the Alderman about this project?
We actually had a meeting with the Alderman, uh, on the project. Um, he, uh, does not support this project. Um, the, my understanding, the concern is there is a senior housing project just down the street on Northwest Highway, and the concerns of the residents were parking. We can't help the fact that, who are parked visiting their families and the seniors may spill over into the neighborhood. That's why I mentioned the fact that every, the other buildings all have two-car garages. We're providing three. We're, you know, providing more than we have to under the code. We cannot fix that problem of people coming over and parking when they visit their people in, in the senior living combination. That was the main concern in that.
Your proposed building has three parking spaces?
Correct.
On site?
On site. That's why everybody else has two.
Okay. Um, okay. Are there any, uh, questions from the board?
The parking, what's the access to the parking? Is it from the street or is it from the alley?
Oh, it, it, I do not, if, oh, there is. So I have a lot of frontage on Monitor and Northwest Highway. I do not have access to the alley. So I'm proposing a driveway of Monitor Avenue.
So, okay, so just for clarification, there'll be three parking spaces, but with regards to the concern about parking one, parking space on the street will be eliminated for the, for the...
For the driveway, yes.
But again...
Just for, just to be clear.
But if we don't have access for the alley, we're allowed to have a drive-through.
Um, I just had a few questions. Um, is the, so do you live in the existing building or do you just...
No, I live a couple blocks west from there, but I rented. My mother-in-law used to live there, and my kids visited the grandma at the second-floor unit a decade ago or so. But no, it's, it's a rental.
Okay, so that's a rental. And you're, these two units that you're going to be building?
I'd like to sell it.
You'll sell those?
Because they're too expensive to rent. So I'll try to sell it at a reasonable amount. The, um, of course, the market conditions need to allow us to be able to sell, but the market's pretty good so far.
And, um, the, currently in that area, since you're familiar with it, is there any issues with basement flooding there?
No. My, my basement at the old building has not flooded. It's not finished, but it's not, has not flooded.
Okay, thank you.
And, can I mention that I met with the neighbors? Yeah.
Did you hear directly from any of your community residents about their opposition to this or only from the Alderman?
So we, the Alderman... So we, the Alderman, the Alderman has organized a meeting at gala banquets, and some people attended, but from the 100 feet which we, which Paul mailed the letters to, only two were in attendance. I have the names here and the addresses. The, the rest of the neighbors didn't come, so I, I went around on a Saturday afternoon and knocked on the doors and just said hi. Some of them know me. And I, for the most part, those who I spoke with are not against it. Some of them were for it or neutral, but, but I ran into two more that were, didn't like anything. They just said, no, we don't want anything. They, they would rather it be a vacant lot for decades. But most neighbors within 100 feet liked the idea and they're not opposed to it. But they did not attend the meeting, so the Alderman didn't get a chance to speak with them.
You two aren't here for this one, are you? That's okay. Sure, that's okay. I just want to make sure. All right, are there any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, if you want to give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board today. Carol Stubblefield, Neil Naroy, offices located at 20 South Clark. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Collaborative Bridges. Collaborative Bridges is seeking a special use to convert approximately 2,655 square feet of office space to medical use on the ground floor of an existing four-story building located at 4223 West Lake Street in the West Garfield neighborhood. The current zoning is PMD number nine, which requires special use approval for the medical services. There are no contemplated changes to the existing structure. This is all internal to the tenant space that Collaborative Bridges currently occupies and operates their offices out of. I'm joined today by Patrick Dombrowski. He is the executive director of Collaborative Bridges, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter recommending approval?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you, you too. Victor, before we take this next case, we're going to take a short recess. I move that we recess just for five minutes. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, we're in recess for five minutes. Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, we're back. And we are on, let's see, what are we on?
6625.
Would everyone plan and testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Agnes Black. I will be very brief. My client's parking expires in five minutes, so I'll be 10 seconds, three minutes. Oh, jeez. All right, very briefly, RM5 property. It is improved with an existing four-story building, which was built with a permit and a resolution approved by this honorable board 18 years ago. And that resolution, which we submitted to the record, included site setback reductions. Those new improvements that we're proposing are actually following those existing setbacks. So we have this approved prior non-conformity with the resolution. The new improvements will be basically at the same location that the current covered walkway and existing masonry wall. Property has several unique features. Its location, proximity to two parks, one directly next door to the north side and one across the street. We have a very unique house. It is fully accessible. It has interior elevator. And we have substandard lot depth, only 119 feet. Because of those unique conditions and unique features, my clients decided to buy this property. They have a daughter who has some very serious medical conditions, and they require that the house is arranged and rearranged in order to help her move a little bit better. So those proposed improvements are meant to do exactly that, improve the living conditions, improve the accessibility to both the first floor and to allow for a safe travel path for the wheelchair between the garage and the main house. Hence, these variations are triggered. We have talked to the neighbors, we have met with Alderman Knudsen, we actually have chief of staff from Alderman's office here in support of the applications. Everybody so far is supporting us, and we are hoping for your approval as well. My witnesses are ready to testify. I have Mike Kaiser with me, the, one of the owners of the property. I have Eric Navoa, the project architect, and of course, our lovely Mrs. Isabella from Alderman's office.
Okay. First, for the applicant and the architect, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They will be admitted into the record. For the Alderman's chief of staff, would you like to express your support for this matter?
Yes, I'm actually the director of zoning for the board.
Oh, okay.
But yes, the Alderman is in support of this project and hopes that it moves forward. I think it'll be great for the owner, and we hope it'll be a good improvement for their daughter to be able to use the home more effectively.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah. So, hi. I'm just, my question really has to do with the area where the addition is, the connection is being made. Is there any impact on the permeable land, ground that--
No, no, thank you, Commissioner, for that question. No, so this is already existing covered walkway.
Okay.
So now it's going to be just, sorry, enclosed. It's still going to be used glass and clerestory windows, so everything's going to be very visible, transparent, as, you know, just to mitigate the mass effect of that enclosure. And it's a very small enclosure, about 216 square feet.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, would everyone plan and to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you.
Actually, my client, Padia, is next to me here, and the other lady is a translator if needed.
Okay, and what is the language that will be translated?
Thai.
Thai, okay. So let's just start in case you need to translate. Could you state your name for the record?
Sure. O Nikita.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to truthfully and accurately translate English to Thai and Thai to English? Thank you. Okay, and then I swore them in already, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, Counselor, let's give us a brief overview and then introduce your witness.
Yes, thank you. So Padia has been a nail specialist for about five years, and she learned her trade over in her own country, but she has worked for other people here, but now she'd like to have her own shop. And so she negotiated her lease, and we did send out the notice, and I did have one very interested neighbor who wanted to know all about chemicals and HVAC, you know, airflow and all those things. Padia had a friend who helped her with the language of it and did a full-page description answering each and every one of his questions. And I didn't have anything to add it to. I forwarded it to him, and he was happy with it. I was surprised because he seemed like one of those people who would never be happy, but he was. And so we've had no other objections or no other discussions. Everyone else seems to be happy to have this new facility, and we'd request your support as well.
Okay. One question for the applicant, if you need to translate. Do you swear or affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Okay, they will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
So this is the kind of case you've had many times before. Mr. Rosen lives in this home since 2013 with his wife and two children. His wife is in a business, she needed some extra storage space, and they have a growing family that needed, it's a little old Georgian, they needed some storage space, so they hired a contractor to build a garage, but also with some storage space above it. The understanding was that he'd take care of everything. It turns out he built it without a permit. Now, this is different from the other cases in that the way Mr. Rosen comes to me is through that contractor. That contractor not only built Mr. Rosen's house without a permit, but he built a bunch of other garages. Most of them don't need permit, need variances, but John Scott, who is number three in the building department, who I've worked with many times before, and I worked out a thing, the contractor was a young fella who obviously did a stupid thing, but he has a young-- did a stupid thing, but he has a young family, and he hopefully has a bright future. Mr. Scott and I worked out a thing where if the contractor was able to bring everything retrospectively into permit, so most of the garages are just kind of a routine little permit, and he's done most of those, but including this one, and there may be one other, and, you know, take care of the architectural fees and take care of the lawyer fees and do everything. Mr. Scott has the contractor on probation, but if he can write everything and get back to that everything is as it should be, he has offered the prospect, and there probably will be a fine, that Mr., his name is Silwa, can keep his city license. The company was Windy City Garage. And so, and I've talked to Mr. Murphy about this. And anyway, it's a way to make everything right and to not ruin this young man's life. And Mr. Rosen's family, that was really just kind of the inadvertent victim of this, will be benefited because his garage will now be brought into full compliance.
So you're actually here, but the owner of-
I'm representing Mr. Rosen, but my-
Right, but the owner of Windy City-
-is being paid by the contractor, that's right.
Okay. And so it was Windy City Garage, and who's the individual here?
His name is Vincent Silwa.
Vincent.
And so far, he's done everything that Mr. Scott has asked him.
Have we heard, I feel like I've heard that name before. Maybe I haven't, I don't know. But that's interesting. Sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Paul Kopeck. Represent the applicant in this case, the applicant LLC. I have with me two witnesses today, Gilbert Barrios. And Gilbert is the manager of the LLC and also is gonna be the manager of the barber shop. Also have Liam Ryan as our expert witness. And very simply, the LLC has a lease on some first-floor space to operate a barber shop. Gilbert Barrios is gonna manage that particular barber shop. We submitted a floor plan with our application showing five workstations, so it's a, it's a small place, but certainly there's another shop within a thousand feet, so we need the special use, so we're here for the special use. We've submitted our application packages, and included in there was a report from Mr. Ryan along with that. So I think it explains what our basis is.
Okay. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Carroll from Thomas R. Raines Attorney at Law LLC. I'm here representing the applicant, Apex Spa Inc. The applicant in the matter of the special use for the property at eleven oh nine West Belmont, Suite One. The applicant proposes to obtain a massage business license in an existing Chicago licensed business, which is currently licensed to provide hair services. It's in a B three-two district, which requires a special use for this kind of business license. The massage establishment will offer massage reflexology, fully clothed, with no disrobing, no full-body massage, along with the hair service, services previously mentioned. The subject site is currently improved with a twenty-two-year-old four-story brick-constructed mixed-use condo building with one commercial unit on the ground floor, of which the applicant is also the owner, having an across, an above-grade gross building area of sixty-nine, sixty-nine-hundred-and-forty square feet, and the unit is eleven hundred square feet. I'm joined today by Candace Yang, who is the applicant's owner-in-principle and who is available to answer any specific question you may have.
Thank you. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Have you had the opportunity to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter? And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Are you testifying as well?
Yes, who's the owner?
I'm gonna ask if Mr. Contras speaks Spanish, if he could be sworn.
Oh, you're gonna interpret?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English?
Much as my, as much as I can.
Okay, great. Let's swear him in now. Sir, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Okay, thank you. All right. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. Regarding property at sixteen forty-seven North Keeler, we are requesting variations to the minimum required side yard, rear yard setbacks for the existing three-story, four-dwelling unit residence. Reduce the site back from the required two feet to zero. Side yard setback at one point oh six feet. Additionally, the applicant requests a reduction in the rear yard setback from three hundred seventy-seven point five feet to thirty feet. To my right is the applicant, Mr. Juan Castillo, and to his right is our architect, Mr. Ramon Contras. Ramon, if you can, Mr. Castillo, you bought this property recently, is that correct?
How long ago? Twenty-five years.
Whoa, in twenty-five years?
Here, let me ask you a couple of questions. First of all, for both of the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And then translate that for him. Okay, okay. Thank you. They will be admitted into the record. Now, maybe this is a question for the architect. Can you explain what the hardship is here? Because I do wanna point out, I actually kinda got a little bit of a chuckle here on the hardship. I actually quoted it, where you wrote, "The main difficulty in following the setback rules is that they don't leave enough space for the planned improvements." If that was a hardship, then every case-
I understand.
-would be a hardship.
I understand. The hardship will go-
So let's hear it from the architect.
So my, my client purchased this property, you know, a while back, as it was. He's trying to remodel it and then found out that, you know, the porch was not up to code, whatever, so then, you know, he's trying to remodel it, bring it, bring everything up to code, but because of the shape of the house, we can't put the porch anywhere else to accommodate the four units we're exiting.
Okay, so the hardship then is the location of the existing building?
Correct.
Okay. And, and, and there's only one spot that you can put this porch?
Yes, this house is pretty big. It's-
Okay.
And pretty weird, actually, too, but, you know, he bought this property not realizing it had these issues.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Okay, so there's not a dormer here? We're not doing, dealing with-
No, no.
Okay. I don't know why I thought there was. That was... This is really about the stairs, the exit stairs being on the side of the building?
And, right, and so it projects to the setbacks and the rear.
Got it.
Is the, I mean, is the, is the building itself code compliant?
Such as?
I mean, like, like, is it, is it legal nonconforming? I mean, it looks like it's-
Well, right now, yes, the building is legal nonconforming.
Okay. Okay. And so you're replacing the existing porch with, what, an enclosed?
With open stairs.
With open stairs? Okay, in the same location that the porch previously was?
Right.
Okay. And that is expanding the footprint a little bit, or no?
Um, no, not really, no. The problem was that, I think, at some point, it was enclosed, and somebody opened it, and then, you know, before he bought the house, and he's, you know, the porch is really in a bad condition, and we're trying to replace it.
Okay.
Yeah, it does, but-
All right. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kopeck. The property is currently a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, Zone DX twelve. The building was built lot line to lot line, pretty much of, as an office building, about sixty or seventy-five years ago. The hardship here is, there's no demand for office space. As soon as we decided to change that, to put it into a residential use, it triggered a different set of zoning criteria, and that's why we're here today.
The hardship is the existing building?
Existing building. We change, and the standards that we have to have this building applied to are different. We have no space on the ground to change any of the footprint. Our plan is not to change the footprint at all, it's all the interior we have.
Okay.
To my right is our architect, Mr. Victor Dropsos, and to his right is Mr. Sharif Fakuri, who is the member manager of the applicant.
Okay. For both of you, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
I was trying to understand this. So I had questions. What's on the first floor in the basement? Are they not affected? Because I didn't see any site plans.
So currently, there's an existing businesses on a first-floor restaurant and, I think, a retailer?
Bookstore, yeah.
Bookstore.
And that'll stay?
That is, remains as is.
So the, and, so, and, so it's the second through the fourth floor that's going to be turned into residential?
That's-
And what's there now?
Currently, it was an office space out there, but right now, I think it's just empty.
Okay. And I couldn't tell from the drawings, it looked like there was, there has to be, because you're going to the Building Department, but I didn't see where there was external light access?
So, yes, so the building is, does have windows around the perimeter of the building, and we're utilizing these windows as also a shared light.
So the inside of the, it'll be the hallways that give the access?
Correct.
And will this be rental or condo?
Rental.
Rentals? And, okay. Is there any affordability in there?
No. It's all by right, so.
Just a question. It's my question always. And the loading and unloading for move-ins, how is that going to be accomplished, since you're stuck there?
So there currently is an existing loading dock for the commercial space on the first floor, and this, this is the, and it's right next to an alley. It's currently being used, you know, as of now even. And we're planning to provide that loading area for the residential use as well.
Is the alley, so it'd be a combination of the loading dock and the alley?
Correct.
And is, okay. Good luck with that.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
But this is used as an unused, it says, because in the drawings, they're planning on doing it. I missed it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Would everyone plan to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
My name is Paul Kopeck, represent the applicant, Mr. Fun Zhang. This property was previously used as a checkers-
No.
-fast food with the drive-through. We reusing that building, and our request is to establish a single-lane drive-through for proposed sushi restaurant. We have spoken with CDOT and the department. We have changed Exhibit E to our application regarding the terms of the hours. My client agrees with those terms of the hours. Could you give, Mr. Zhang, please state your name?
Hi, my name is Fun Chen. This is Fang.
Uh, Shuang Jiang. I'm the architect.
Okay. Do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. For the applicant, have you had a chance to review the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation of approval?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in this letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have. I, this is a drive-through, correct?
Yes.
And the, how close is the nearest residence to where the microphone is, to where the orders will be made?
From the order, from the order board, how far is it to the residence? Because it just wasn't-
Didn't see it.
That's the older microphone.
Yep. And this, this is where the building, yeah. the building, yeah. This alley and then the apartment building.
Okay. So this is like 16 feet from the...
So the residence is on the other side of the alley?
Yes.
But how far is the speed, the, where people make the order from the alley? Because I can't tell here.
From here?
Yeah, I think it's...
This will be there in a time.
I, what I'm concerned about is that, uh, I'm concerned about the, the sound, the noise early, because you, your hours start at 5:00 in the morning, right, and go to 10:00?
Uh, it's, thanks, alley.
6:00, yeah, so...
Fence here, where's the order?
It'll be from, um, the operation hour would be from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily.
That's not quite the...
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I did ask that though, so that was... The, the issue is really if it affects...
Order board, there's a fence here, and how far is from the order board to the residences?
Uh, the resident would be over here.
So you've got an alley of 16 feet?
Not setback.
And setback about another, it'll be about... I'm sorry, I apologize. No, no, I apologize.
So is there any, 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 um, what do you call it?
Uh, from...
Some way, is, is the sound moderated in any way so that it doesn't go in that direction?
Um, there will be a 35 foot, um, uh, 35 feet, um, sound swarming fence?
Oh, okay.
That we're gonna put between that and the resident.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Hemanek Castro. I am a partner at Acosta Esger here today, uh, representing the applicant, Firehouse Community Arts Center of Chicago. With us today, to my right, is a manager of the manager of the property owner, also, uh, the wife, uh, Kim Jackson, the wife of Pastor Phil, uh, Jackson, who is a director of the applicant. Um, and then to their, his right, is Peter Poulos, who is the land appraiser. So I can ask, uh, Kim, could you please state your name and business address for the record?
Sure. Kim Jackson, business address, 2446 West Madison in Chicago.
Pastor Phil, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Pastor Phil Jackson, 2111 South Hamlin, Chicago, Illinois 60623.
And then Peter, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Peter Poulos, offices at 230 West Monroe, Chicago, Illinois 60606.
Okay. Uh, so for this particular case, uh, it's located in RT4 zoning district. It is currently a vacant two-story building, uh, uh, designed for residential use. It includes a two-car garage. Previously, this particular building included, uh, transitional residence use for eight males and their dependents, uh, operated under a different applicant. The site is now, as I mentioned, vacant. That applicant, that operator is not affiliated anymore with the site, and Pastor Phil's, uh, entity decided to take over the property and to also establish, uh, transitional residence use for eight justice-involved males as they transitioned to a better life. There will be no, uh, additional parking, so the two-car garage will remain. We will be providing four bicycle spaces per the, uh, PDL letter issued by the Department of Planning and Development. And the services provided at this site will be provided by the Firehouse Community Arts Center of Chicago, which has 20 years-long commitment with the city of Chicago and that particular community to prevent and inter, uh, inter, inter, to have the intervention and prevention for violence. Uh, that, uh, property that provides, uh, that community services will be located just south of the subject site at 2, uh, 2111 South Hamlin. For the subject site at 1922, there will be two staff with eight-hour shifts, no more than five staff, uh, total. And, uh, we are so appreciative of Mayor Brandon Johnson's support in this matter and other, uh, alderpeople, uh, such as Alderman Burnett and, uh, the alderwoman of this particular ward, Alderman Monique Scott. We appreciate their support and also appreciate, uh, Fernando Espinoza from DPD guiding us through this process, uh, and getting us here.
Excellent. Um, first question for all of you. Do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Uh, for the applicant, sir, have you had a chance to, uh, read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation of approval?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Thompson. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Pitch Ventures LLC. I'm joined today by, uh, Bakari Samer, the representative and owner of Pitch Ventures LLC. The applicant is the owner of 1122 North Hoyne, the existing two-dwelling unit residential building. The building was constructed in the late 1800s or early 1900s. The applicant proposes to preserve the, the property by renovating the building and adding modern amenities. The proposed improvements include rooftop deck to the building, constructing a new two-car garage with a roof deck, constructing a new porch staircase that will connect, uh, the building to the garage via catwalk. In order to complete these, uh, improvements, the applicant seeks variations to reduce the minimum north side setback from two feet down to 0.38 inches and to allow the parapet wall, in order to allow the parapet wall to be constructed on the north facade of the, the building. The applicant also seeks variation to allow the rear setback to be reduced from 31 feet, 31 8 inches to 22 inches. And finally, to allow 168.35 square feet of required rear open space to be located on the deck of the garage that's, uh, four feet above grade. We are here to answer any questions. Uh, we can go through, obviously, uh, go through all the criteria or...
No. Um, yeah, let's, um, uh, for the applicant, uh, do you swear or affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah. Uh, I just, uh, again, I'm, I want to ask my question about, uh, permeable surface. Is it affected at all by these changes that you're making?
Not at all.
Didn't seem to. I thought I'd double-check. Um, and are these all units going to be for rent or sale?
For sale.
And is there any affordability?
No.
Okay. My questions.
There are only two units.
Yeah.
They're, they're going to be duplex, so there's only two units in, in the building. And I just, if I could add, the, um, Chicago Landmarks Commission has reviewed this because it is in the Ukrainian Village District.
Mm-hmm.
And they've approved it. They approved the plans. And Alderman Lasbada, it also supports this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you. Um, so this is, uh, an iconic establishment on the south side. It's been there for 50 years. Uh, it's a, um, an old industrial building that was made into a classic, uh, roller rink. And it's the center of, uh, youth activity, uh, alternative to hanging out on the street and, and things like that. In 2019, uh, Carlos Ponzi, Ponzi and his wife Ramona, who are here with us, took it over from the people who had run it before that. And, um, uh, uh, again, they're just the, the center of a lot of very positive alternative activity. Uh, Alderman, uh, Michelle Harris enthusiastically supports it and, uh, the, uh, city in its wills, wisdom somehow, after 50 years, decided that they need a, uh, PPA license. And, um, their, uh, parking lot is, if you count feet across a train tracks, on the other side of the train tracks, there is an R2 residential district. So technically, they're within 125 feet of a R2 residential district. So they need this variance to be able to apply for their PPA license. Uh, I know of no one who, um, objects to it. Everyone is very supportive of it, and we'd ask your support as well.
Um, for the applicants, uh, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Schiller-Secondes, Commissioner Soto, Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in closed session.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao? Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve, I'm sorry, I move to affirm the zoning administrator's decision with regard to calendar numbers 24925A and 25025A. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
No.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Oh.
I vote yes, the applications for appeal are denied and the zoning administrator's decision is affirmed. I move to approve application for calendar number 25125S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 25225S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 25525Z and 25625Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 25725S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao, I'm sorry, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 25825S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 25925Z and 26025Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26125Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 26225Z, 26325Z, and 26425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26525S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 26625Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 26725S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 26825Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers, counter number 26925S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 27325S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 27425S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers 27525Z and 27625Z, consistent with the plans from Grid Studio dated December 26, 2023. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers 27725Z and 27825Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao? Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number 27925S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 28025S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers 28325Z and 28425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number 28525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Absent.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 19325S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move that we recess until 2:00 PM. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, we're in recess until 2:00 PM.